I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that our cell phones are turned to the off of vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T, U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The clerk, the chair calls on the city clerk, Ivan Nelson, for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
He's in the building.
Cannon?
Here.
And Raid?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Williams to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for the opportunity to convene today. Father, we come pleading to you, Father God, on behalf of our city, our nation, Father God, and our world, Father God, asking you to provide wisdom and guidance in this period, Father God. Father, we realize, Father, that we're in the midst of trying times, Father God, and many of us believe that you're trying to get our attention at this point, Father God. Lord God, we're listening to you, Father, we're looking to you, Father, and we're pleading to you, Lord Jesus. Continue to guide us, Father God. Grant us the wisdom to make sound decisions in this very difficult time, Father God, and through it all, Father, we will continue to give you the glory, the honor, and the praise, for it's in Jesus' name we ask it all. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I'm going to call the EMA Director, Deborah Gaither, to provide an update on the COVID-19.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, we come to date with still an update that continues to grow. Sadly, we've had another death in our city, so we're up to 12 deaths now with 257 confirmed cases. Um, our cases are growing not just because we're testing, but because we're finding those individuals who are positive. And we want to do that so that we can continue to teach individuals to isolate during that time of which they're most contagious, so we can continue to try and curb COVID-19. There are many response efforts we have going on, not only in the city, but throughout the county. Um, I just want to take a minute and talk briefly about our emergency management team. They have worked tirelessly since February 21st to try and meet the incoming needs and to address situations day and night, through the weekend, anytime. So if you see some of your EMA staff members outside, outside here, please, you know, just tell them thank you and you appreciate their hard work. Sometimes, because we used to be in the basement and now we're in a bunker, um, those guys get forgotten and we really appreciate them and the hard work that they do, along with our responders, Law &amp; Fire and EMS. And that's not just in the City of Gaston, that's all across Edgewall County. Um, then another thing that I'd like to remind people of, there are still ways that we can curb that we haven't thought of. If you think of a new way to curb COVID, we're using the hashtag #COVID19Edgewall. Hashtag #COVID19Edgewall, I believe that's the way it was. And share that on social media. One thing that I've encouraged some businesses and some municipalities to do is to wear a lanyard. Keep your own ink pen on your lanyard. Um, keep your, your face mask on your lanyard if you're going to be reusing a face mask. This just reminds you that I don't need to pick up somebody else's pen and use it. Um, it gives you a daily reminder often, so, so do that if you can. Me and you have a pocket, us ladies don't always have a pocket, so, um, lanyards will work good to give you that reminder. Um, do you have any questions about COVID-19 in the response right now? I know several of you have asked for, especially you, Councilman Cannon, you've asked several times about doing testing in your districts. Um, those are still on the table. They're having to recoup and make sure they get enough at Public Health, get enough supplies together to do some of these. So it hasn't been forgotten, it's still there. And Mary goes over it every week with the staff to try and get one worked in. Um, there were other locations too, but any questions?
Deborah, my, my concern is in Alabama City. We've got so many homeless people down there. You can get on Wall Street every day, any time of the day, and you can go down and you can stop at that light and they're there at the gazebo and you can just roll your window down here and just coughing, they're laying on the gazebo, they're sick. They're on the wall there by the library. They're walking, they're going in these stores, just a coughing and standing outside and they might be trying to get money for people, you know, and they're just, uh, all that right there, and I'm just really concerned that we need to test those people, you know, down in Alabama City. And that's why, you know, we wanted to try to get that at Edgewall, I mean Elliot Community Center. If there's any way we could do that, you know, those people would appreciate that because there's no many, no matter, you know, how many cases going to be down there, you just have to determine that, but there's a lot of sick folk walking around down through there.
Right, and I agree, and we want to do that especially for our nonprofits who house most of our homeless. We have the Love Center, we have Salvation Army, all these locations that, you know, work closely with us to make sure they house our homeless, so we would love to have that done.
Deborah, can you force them to actually be tested?
No, we cannot force them to be tested, we can only offer it.
That's right, that's the problem.
Do you know if they're wearing masks? Because we can get them some masks.
There's not, I haven't seen anybody down there, I'm talking about with a mask on.
And the majority of them have been offered masks.
Okay.
Um, we've done that through several places, um, and they just have not chosen to do so.
Maybe we get some masks and go down there to gazebo, right in there and just, you know, give them out and see if they would wear them? You think that's a possibility?
Yeah, that's a possibility, we'll, we'll see if we can.
Most of them end up at Elliot Community Center.
That's right, during the daytime, they do.
Can we tempt them before we let them in that building?
Yes, sir, you absolutely could, if you, um.
That's passed, not alone.
Mm-hmm, you, um, you can have them, I mean, that would be an instruction, um, I suppose, from the mayor to that building. Um, they could have, they could take their temp and they could encourage them to wear masks, encourage them to wear gloves, use hand sanitizer when they come in. So yes, that could be an option, that would probably be good for that community.
Deborah, if we, if we tested and said there was 25 homeless people that had COVID-19, what would we do with them?
And I don't have that answer for you. We've talked with the county and we've talked with several city entities about where we could house those individuals. And as of yet, we have not come up with a location. We have several options, but we've not defined a location that if we had a large number of, of homeless, where we would house them.
Since, since you brought that up, let me say this. My organization, Gaston Power and Initiative, we just received a grant to house COVID-19 patients at a hotel. I know a couple of weeks ago when we was talking about this, I don't know the exact amount of the grant until we get the contract, when we get the contract, they'll tell us the exact amount.
That's good to know.
So we can tell two, I'm gonna get in touch with two on one, I just got the email late last night, so, uh.
Um, our concern is that some of the hotel owners and managers are not allowing positive COVID patients, so, um, you know.
That was the problem we ran into.
We need to work an issue, I mean, we need to work that out beforehand and work with just one location. That way maybe we could isolate any exposure.
Exactly.
Be glad to talk with you further about that.
Yes, ma'am, indeed.
Okay.
We don't have any empty buildings we could house them in or anything like that? And use this grant money maybe to feed them and all that kind of stuff, or is that an option?
The only location and building that we have used for the homeless in the past is Elliot Community Center. That is where we do the cooling stations and where we do the warming centers during the winter. And we have sheltered there because the winter was so cold at times. So those are the only, that's the only location in the City of Gaston city limits that we have used in the past. Now, you know, that would be for someone else to approve us to use it for this, but we'd be, you know, we'd be happy to if we find a large number that need housing.
Um, Ben, let me ask Ben one question. Ben, did we, years and years and years ago, when Jim Armstone was on the council, did we not deem the rescue squad to be a shelter or something like that on Black Creek Road? And they had beds and stuff down there? Do you remember? Somebody remember?
I don't have that in our mutual aid agreements, but.
I remember the offer was made, but I don't know whether we ever fulfilled it through PMA or not.
Yeah, I don't have that in a mutual aid agreement, but, you know, that could be another option if they still have bunk rooms, I don't know if they do or not, I've not been in.
I don't remember, but just something came to me about that that jarred me in my mind.
I have a question. Uh, on the testing that was done on Tuscaloosa Avenue, do we, at Carver, do we know the amount of the number that tested positive? I know.
Um, I will be honest with you, I do not know it off the top of my head, but we do have a count.
Okay.
So I will get that, maybe, we've had several since then, so, um, I don't remember that off the top of my head.
And I know one or two people haven't got their test results back. And then it's several people, you know, since we've had that testing down there, I've had a lot of calls, people want to go get tested. And, you know, we tell them to call the Health Department, they call the Health Department and they tell them they would give them a call back and they not calling anybody back.
I'll bring that to their attention. Um, I know that they have several, um, days that they do testing, so I'll bring it to their attention.
They do it.
You know, if anybody ever gets a non-answer, let me know.
Exactly.
And then I can follow up.
Because we're trying to get my, my youngest son tested, he was out of town when we had the test. My oldest son took it, but, uh, and, and they haven't called us back yet.
Okay.
And then, and that's just on top of all the other calls I've given, saying the same thing.
I'll be glad to bring that up.
Keep calling back.
Yeah, I'll be glad to bring that up to Mary, and I'm quite sure they can work those people in. Anyone else? Thank you, and we thank you all for your support during this.
I just want to tell you, thank you for all you all are doing. And I know you tired of me calling you for masks, I know you are, but, uh, I'll give you more money if I have to, but we need those masks because I'm giving them out. And at this protest, uh, the other night, a lot of those young people were not wearing masks and they were close together, so I told them at the next protest, I will be there to hand out masks to everybody and they need to make it a priority because they, they not social distancing.
Right, and I was going to say, um, yes, during the protest, there needs to be some social distancing guidelines that are at least talked about at the beginning, um, of your events, so that, that people are not contracting it and spreading it. Um, you know, we, we had one shot at this and it, it's beginning to divide us that we didn't follow instructions well, so, yeah. If, if others will, um, do that to any type of event that you have, talk social distancing, um, talk masks, hand sanitizers, give those instructions before your events that you haven't hold.
Thank you.
I was, uh, listening to TV last night and there was a doctor and they're talking about all the marches and the protests and everything, and he said every city and everybody that did not wear a mask probably need to quarantine themselves for 14 days because they don't know who had it and who didn't have it. That's what he was saying.
Yeah, that would, it would be very hard to find out after everyone dispersed and went back. So, yeah, I do, I do hate that about it, so, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Gaither.
Thank goodness I had my mask on.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and council meeting that was held May 26th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of May 22nd through the 28th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation? Uh, unfinished business, we have none today. Uh, we have a resolution that's authorizing a special use permit to T-Mobile, and this is for the modification of their equipment at the existing wireless telecommunications facility that's located at 104 12th Street in East Gaston. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this, uh, resolution.
So moved.
So moved.
Is there any discussion?
I didn't have a discussion, but I'll see your grant for the question.
Okay.
Were you good to go?
We talked about it last week.
Clerk? Will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution is the authorized agreement with the EE Group and Company, and this is for the electrical engineering plans and specifications required to construct the improvements to the sports park at Gaston State Community College. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Aye.
Any discussion? I think I wanted to, uh, to me to clarify this. This is just a, like a blueprint or a design, it's not actually, because we didn't sort of specify that last week, this is not the actual turning of the dirt. This is just the design, am I correct? This is just like a, okay, that's what I wanted to make clear, that it wasn't turning any dirt, it was just drawing pictures. All right, thank you.
This, this just has the wiring schematics for the indoor soccer field, right?
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any new business? We do have some, uh, department reports and I had asked that, uh, Mr. Williamson, the engineer director, to come and give us some updates on the projects that have been ongoing in our city.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, preparing those updates is requested. I've broken this down, of course, you guys asked questions that you have, but projects in construction, uh, got the projects recently completed and then, uh, projects in design. And like I did before, this is primary projects, we've got a slew of miscellaneous smaller projects, ranging from drainage to some roadway improvement, sidewalks, et cetera. So if I don't list something that you've got a question for, as always, please ask. Uh, projects in construction today, our two resurfacing projects, we have the, uh, the normal city street resurfacing projects that's funded by our taxes and our general fund. That is almost complete, the contractor's working through his punch list items. Uh, the CDBG street resurfacing project is, is also nearing completion. He's got five streets remaining, if you've been watching that or you're, you live on those streets. Those last five are the streets that were majorly redone with the, what we call the FDR process, where we churn up the roadway, put the cement down, it's basically a completely new roadway. And so the cement process has been completed. Uh, the wearing surface will be placed on probably within a week or two, depending on whether the rains move in that affects that. The Highland Avenue, Thomas Drive and Spurline Drive roadway patching projects, there's, there's large patching projects that cost quite a bit, we're above a normal quote that we put out. That project, the primary work is complete, they're working through punch list items as well, some cleanup, different things like that. Uh, the South 11th Street widening and resurfacing project is certainly still in construction. Everything appears to be going good. Uh, this is Heath's best guess, mid to late summer, I think we'll be completely through. They're almost through with the south side gutter, when they do that, it's open for the roadway. Uh, I guess the, I should say, the, the subgrade work to happen, the milling that'll happen, and actually the, the asphalt to be placed. So once that occurs, it should move right along. Uh, nearing completion also is the Murphy Stadium Drainage Repair. Uh, that contractor, that's the one that was done under an emergency status, if you remember. Chestnut Street would get flooded even with small rains because of the collapse that we had. Uh, that contract has, has been on somewhat hold the whole time. We almost got through, pandemic hit, uh, got a great working relationship with that contractor, so he got everything buttoned up, pulled off for a little while till we knew what was going on. I met him earlier this week, or actually yesterday, uh, to finish the asphalt placement, put some fences together and finish that one up, so that one's really close. East Gaston Community Center project is in construction and going well. Hopefully, uh, you've been by there to see that, the walls are going up, a lot of site work is going up, some of the, the concrete work. Uh, right now, the roof panels are scheduled to arrive on site on June 8th, which will greatly, once he gets that in, he can finish the lower walls and then hopefully be that much closer to working inside, so that one is progressing well. Raymond Hill Community Center Roof Replacement Project is also substantially complete. Uh, I believe there's some skylight replacements that we have to go in there, material. And we've seen this across the board, as I think we all have, even getting groceries. There's some supply issues going on right now, so this, some of these are affecting construction, uh, and that's one of them, the, the last bit for that job are the skylights and they're scheduled to be in within a couple of weeks and that project will be done. Uh, recently completed projects we had talked about before, across the road here on Walnut Street, Amphitheater Drainage Repair Project, that is done and wrapped up, complete. The North 34th Street Railroad Derailment Roadway Repair, uh, that one is done, uh, it's been completed. And finally, the Air Depot Sprinkler Head Replacement Project was also done. Some of those are going through their advertisement periods, but as far as work, it's complete. And then the primary projects that we have in design right now, of course, the next phase of South 11th Street, and there was some confusion, I think last time I talked about this and folks thought that I was saying, uh, the one that's in construction now is not going to be done for another year or so, that's not true. As I said a minute ago, uh, the one in construction now, I will be surprised unless some crazy weather event happens. You know my disclaimers, uh, that one should be done by mid to late summer. But the next phase that will go from Black Creek Parkway up north to the new bridge, uh, that right-of-way phase was actually scheduled to be authorized by the Department of Transportation yesterday. And so that's what we've been waiting on to move ahead. Once we get the right-of-way in place, we can do the needed utility relocations and move that process forward. But we're all heavily working on that as well, so it is in design. Uh, the next one we had talked, excuse me, had talked about before, the Highway 431 Hood Avenue Intersection Improvements, that's a 100% grant from ALDOT, the ATRIT 2 grant that we're extremely excited to get. ALDOT is completing that survey and design work themselves and have started that. I know the survey was ordered, I, I haven't seen the survey, but to my knowledge, they've probably at least done the preliminary work on that, and so they're progressing it. The, um, East Chestnut, George Wallace Drive Intersection Improvements, where you come out between the venue and Ronnie Watkins Ford, that's in design. We're just about done with the design phase of that, but I do have some ALDOT permits and a little bit of right-of-way to look at there, so we're progressing that as well. Uh, the new roadway from the venue to the boat launch at Coosa Landing, that project is near completion. We're wrapping up a few little, uh, minor changes to the plans and should be able to, to begin advertisement, uh, very soon. And the same with the Alabama City Center Parking Lot and Improvements and Additions, where, uh, we've got the Transportation Department and a few of the police, uh, folks over there. The parking lot in front will get redone, uh, from an FTA grant that we're able to receive as well as new parking in the back for the trolleys and some of the folks that work as well on a normal basis, which will free up the front for both those operations and the Boys and Girls Clubs, so that's a good one. And another grant, so that's certainly a good one. Another grant, uh, you see the theme here, all these grant projects is the ones that, uh, certainly the mayor's office said, no, don't check up, we're, we're good to go on those, even the ones with some matches to try to benefit, uh, from those, uh, funding agencies as much as possible. And the funding agencies have said, you're authorized, go ahead, so we, we have done that. Uh, one, the other one that I was about to say is the next sidewalk improvement project in East Gaston. Predominantly, uh, it's sidewalks, but predominantly handicap ramps, uh, the ones that we didn't get to complete in the last phase a couple of years ago. So now we're all the way down and that project is actually advertising now. And so, uh, a couple of weeks, I should be able to bring you, uh, my recommendation for an award for that one to actually start construction. Uh, another one that's come up, the sedimentation basin, uh, for the city borrow pit. A lot of folks don't know, uh, the city does operate a borrow pit. We actually, uh, without speaking for Public Works, they can use this dirt for a multiple number of reasons, but predominantly for landfill coverage, and so it takes a large volume of dirt. That required a NPDS permit from ADM to do that. We have to meet certain requirements on site, and one of those is to build a sedimentation basin because you're moving so much dirt, it creates turbid water. We have to control that water so it doesn't give into our creeks and streams and, and break those environmental laws. And so we've got that, uh, design completed and should be able to start advertising that one soon as well. Then finally, uh, as, as was mentioned earlier with the electrical requirements, the Gaston Sports Park at Gaston State, um, we are progressing in design with that well. We're meeting pretty much weekly, sometimes bi-weekly, depending on the progress of the consultants. We met this last Monday, uh, that electrical engineer has worked with us for quite some time. He's probably already at about 50% complete, so he certainly appreciates you, uh, moving forward with that design. But right now, as with all of these, uh, outside of the grants, but as far as the designs, uh, we're looking at funding, which Ms. Lisa, we'll get into here in just a moment, working closely with the mayor's office on how we progress. Uh, so once we get this designed specifically, as well as all of them that I had mentioned, we look to see how the, how the atmosphere is, what makes sense, what doesn't. Uh, specifically with the sports park, I would imagine we'll get that designed, get the true estimates in place, figure out how we want to phase it. It's the same thing as I said before, uh, maybe, you know, we can do some things quick, maybe we need to hold off for a little while, either way, we're going to assess the situation. And then finally, uh, as you know, that we've had one going for quite some time, the Broad Street Bridge Renovation and Repair Project, uh, that one's still in design. Uh, so, uh, plenty of things going, we're still busy. As I said, there's a lot of smaller projects that I'm not going to bore you with, with the details, but do you guys have any questions for any of those?
The only question I have, Heath, I know you're busy and you're doing great work, you're doing a lot of different projects and you're juggling and all of that, but I'm still getting complaints up on Glen Irish Drive where the, uh, you know, I know you have to get the easements and all that. Are we working on that yet? Because that water's coming off the mountain and, uh, washing the foundation out of the latest house.
That's one of the smaller projects we're aware of. We're actually, uh, we've looked at working some things in-house. Of course, in-house folks are also, uh, stretched pretty thin with, with a lot of folks laid off as well. We're aware of it, certainly, it is hard to access that area. Uh, there's some right-of-way there, a lot of, without getting into the weeds here.
Right.
Uh, there's some things you can do in old unimproved right-of-ways, but it takes a lot of resources to get up to it and then it doesn't always fix the problem. A lot of the problems still resides within that private property. So we have to look at each one of those carefully and weigh out, what can we do? Uh, what, what resources do we have, et cetera, for each and every spot? I, I know most of you, if not every one of you, have a similar situation you've come to me with or maybe Public Works or the mayor's office with. Uh, there's a lot of private property issues here, uh, it, it's just hard to navigate each one. We do our best to help everyone, but we also, uh, we know our, our resources are limited, so we try to do that appropriately.
Heath, I'm gonna bring one up and it's probably not the appropriate place or time. Uh, we're always interested in building new homes in the City of Gaston. I've got a contractor who's already built, finished one. He has plans to build two to four more on Marjory Circle. All in the world he wants is just clear the road again and get it in place. Now, whether it's Public Works or engineering, I don't know. But I want more homes built in my district, and he's there, in place, ready to go. I wanted to make it public, so hopefully he'll see it. And no, I haven't been sitting on my land, or you haven't been sitting on your.
Right, and yeah, that, that's part of a process that, uh, whichever route it goes. So on my side, it becomes a budgetary thing, is it, is it a project that's budgeted? Do I have a contract in place that we can handle that with? Public Works, you know, similar situations with in-house personnel, what resources do they have to be able to do that? It's one of those we need to discuss with the mayor's office, see what we have in place to, to handle it and determine which way we want to go forward.
The administration.
Right.
Do we want to build new homes in Gaston, or do we still want to send them outside?
Right.
Had a heck of a time bringing them back, so we needed to have a discussion about that.
Certainly. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
I saw some activity on Rainbow Drive on the medians, so can you give, give an update on that?
Uh, absolutely, uh, other departments are here, I get, I'll, I'll speak for you. That's been, uh, an in-house, uh, project that, that is nearing completion. And so, uh, I think as everybody saw a while back, Public Works came in and removed the trees. Uh, Parks and Rec is now going back and dressing those up. Uh, I saw the same this week, they had already worked on the 431 corridor and 411 is what they've been on most recently. So now they'll go get the quotes to, to bring, uh, the seed, the mulch, et cetera, to get those areas back up again. Like we talked about before, right now, we're stabilizing the area. As far as what we do, future landscaping, that's up for discussion. Uh, bring everybody appropriately to the table and say, hey, in-house, say, what do we want long-term here? But right now, we can't leave dirt spots that, that get into those environmental laws as well, so we need to stabilize those areas. So we need to stabilize those areas, which is what we're in the process of doing. So that should be complete relatively soon, once we can get the seed in, and then we'll go from there. Keep them maintained?
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Eve.
All right, we have our finance director, Ms. Rossa, and she'll come and give us an update.
I hope it don't die in the middle.
Well, good morning, everyone. I feel like I have been set up. I have to follow, I have to follow David Hooks, the IDA, and now I had to follow Heath. And it's all, you know, positive, 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 positive. So I'm going to be as positive as I can possibly be this morning, I assure you.
That's why we call you last, because we want to end on a positive note.
Yes, ma'am. I hate to say it, but as we all know, finances are not a popular thing these days. So you have all just, hopefully, have received, this is the financial report from May. There again, so that everyone will be on the same page and we all understand, these are April taxes. So sales tax and occupational tax for April are due the 20th of May. So these are actually April taxes, but this is our May report. And I'm just going to start out, if you want to follow along on the memo on the front or if you want to follow along in the report, either way is fine. So we all know that, that since COVID-19 hit, not only the city of Gadsden, but our state and our nation as a whole, that finances have been a concern across the nation. There have been many cities that have been impacted in numerous ways. So this report is going to show the impact of COVID-19 on us for, basically, for April taxes or for the month of May. Frankie has already told you, and I don't know if y'all heard, so I want to tell you again what he said a while ago. Since the beginning of this fiscal year, our year runs from October to September. So since the 1st of October, we have had revenue taken in of a little over $36 million. And we have had expenses in that time of a little over $30 million. So at this point, we have taken in $5.4 million more in revenue than what we have expended out. That is a great thing. Now, before COVID-19 hit our city, we were in excellent condition. We were having a great year. Okay, we were off to a good start. And when COVID-19 hit, you've got to remember, we were at mid-year. March is mid-year. That's mid-year for our city. So at the mid-year point, things were really looking good. And I have to say, and I've said it many times, this city financially is very sound. We have been very sound for many years, and that's because of the administration, the decisions that have been made over the years and how we handle just our decision-making. And not only that, but just how we handle our finances. You know, and that says a lot for all of y'all, okay? And that's something that we have to continue to do. But at the same time that we were ahead of the game when COVID-19 hit, you know, are we impacted? Of course we are, okay? If we weren't, you know, what could we say? But we have been impacted. And that's what I want to share with you today, just kind of the impact of where we are and what has happened to us over the past two months. So if you look at your report, you'll notice that in comparing May of 2020 to May of 2019, our general fund revenue is down $816,923. So as of the end of May, our revenue was down 23%. Now, that sounds high, it does, but let me tell you this. I have been on, the Alabama League with the lady, she's the finance director of the city of Tuscaloosa, a very impressive lady, have set up a revenue portal that I have been inputting revenue numbers for the city of Gadsden on. And there are a lot of cities that across our state, the state of Alabama, that are seeing anywhere from 40% to 45% decreases in their revenue since COVID-19 hit, okay? So we are very, very blessed that we are only at a 23% deficit. I know it sounds high, but I'm telling y'all, that's not bad. Because you have got to remember that in the month of April, a large portion of our retail was closed down, and even our restaurants, to a degree, were closed down. And I have seen what the impact, what this has happened to those restaurants and those retail businesses. So, but the thing that is great for the city of Gadsden is what you heard just recently from David Hooks. We are not just a retail-based city, we have industry, okay? And we all know that we just are losing or have lost one of our largest industries. Goodyear, that's been here for 90 years. And is that going to impact us? Yes, it is, okay? There's no doubt. A lot of you were here when the steel plant closed down, and the impact that they had on us then, I was here. So yes, we are going to be impacted, but the good thing is, is that we have a strong industrial base in this town. And we're very fortunate, and many of you said this, we're very fortunate that we have David Hooks here and the IDA board that we have to bring in industries to our city. So you can look at some cities, and I'm not going to mention them, but there's one in particular, that you can look at that city, and they are so heavily, they so heavily rely on retail that they are taking a huge hit right now. So there again, it's not, you have to have a good mix. You can't be all just retail-commercial. You've got to have a good mix of both the retail-commercial and the industrial aspect, okay? And so that is, definitely has helped us. But we, like I said, we are off 23%. Before COVID-19 hit, like I said, we had an excess, okay? So since COVID-19 hit, we are down in our general fund revenue for this month. Since the beginning of the year, we have lost 1.1, almost 1.2 million dollars. Our total loss in general fund revenue since COVID hit is about 1.5 million dollars, okay? Now, in looking at sales tax, let's talk about our sales tax for just a minute. As you all know, in the city of Gadsden, we have a 10% sales tax, okay? And I'm trying to be very elementary here, because I want our public to understand. Okay, I think these are things they need to understand. Our sales tax is 10% in the city of Gadsden, but only 5% of that is city tax. You've got 4% state tax and 1% counting. So of that 5%, 3% of that goes into our general fund, okay? The other 2%, one goes into capital improvement, one fund. The other 1% goes into your capital improvement, two fund. So the loss that you're seeing here in the general fund, we had a loss in our sales tax, 3% sales tax of $334,289, which is down 20.2%. So most of our decrease that we're seeing is in our sales tax, which that would make sense. But that's just the general account, okay? The total sales tax for this past month was down $560,000, because we were down $225,726 in the two capital improvement funds. So you've got to consider that, okay? This is not just, this is not just the total loss in sales tax. You've got to look at what's going into those other two funds as well. And that impacts, those capital improvement funds are where we do all these projects at. So we have to sit back and look, you know, how much do we have in those funds? What projects can we continue to go forth with, or that we can afford to continue to go forth with? And those are things that we've got to look at in detail in the next, you know, few days or few months. On our occupational tax for this month, we were down $159,829, which is a 13.9% decrease. Now there again, that's directly related to unemployment. Like Frankie said, before this all started, our unemployment rate was only 4%. That's excellent. And I'm not sure what it is today in the city of Gadsden, but there again, we have been impacted because we rely not just on sales tax, but on occupational tax. Those are our two largest taxes. I've told you all 100 times. It counts for 72% of our revenue. So those are the two places that we are being hit the hardest. The third one I want to point out to you is our recreational income. Recreational income was down almost a little over 100% actually last month, because we lost money. We spent out more money in recreational than what we took in. Well, this month, we're down $135,927, or 71.1%. Now, that's because a lot of our facilities were still closed last month, Nakalula Falls, the venue. And we're still having to also make out refunds, not at the level that we were doing the first month, but there's still a lot of things that we're having to refund, where people have rented things that were supposed to take place, you know, in late May, 1st of June. And we've had to cancel those things because of the virus and the facilities not being opened back up. Now, let's talk about the expense side. On the expense side, we're at 54.5% as of this report. That means we're 12.1 or 12.2% under budget, okay? A lot of those cost measures have been put in place by this administration. Some of them have just happened because facilities have been closed. When your facilities are closed down, your utility costs are going to go down, okay? You know, we, our gas and oil, we saw a decrease in that cost because of the cost of fuel. I mean, everybody knows, you know, the cost of fuel has went down. So we're seeing, there's a lot of places that where we're seeing cost savings or where we've put cost-saving measures into place. And so on the expense side, we're in excellent condition, I mean, excellent condition, which is the reason why we have been able to have that excess in our balance. Now, I told you from the beginning of the 1st of this year to right now, we have $5.4 million in excess that we've taken in revenue, okay? But for the month of May, let's talk about last month. Last month, we took in $2.7 million in our general fund in revenue. Our expenses were $3.7 million. And that's with a large portion of our employees, most all of our non-employee employees, not being here, okay? So last month, we spent out a million, a little over a million more than what we took in. So what's going to happen for the next three or four months, we don't know, okay? But I really believe that we will continue to see an impact from COVID-19. I'm not so sure that we'll see a positive on our revenue side, probably for the rest of this fiscal year. It would not surprise me if the next four years that we do wind up in a deficit each of those months. So at this point, you know, let's be thankful that we have what we have, and we've done as well as we've done, and that hopefully we will end the year on maybe not a positive note, but on hopefully break, kind of towards the break-even mark, which will be amazing with what we've been through, to be able to say that we can do that. Now, budget season is about to start, okay? And there are going to be some decisions that are going to have to be made. We, the loss of Goodyear, forget COVID-19, the loss of Goodyear is permanent, okay? And I've already told you, Goodyear has about a $2.5 million impact on our budget every year. So, you know, there are going to have to be some concessions made. We're going to have to look at some cuts and doing some different things, and that's all going to come. But there again, I feel very, I feel very blessed, we should all feel very blessed, to be a part of this city and to know that, you know, that we have strived so hard to be diligent in the way that we handle our finances. And that is so important during these times that we're in. And there are so many cities that cannot say that right now. And I'm so thankful that I'm standing here and having to stand in one of those places and say, we're not going to make it, you know? So all I can ask is that we continue to stand strong, we be unified. I think that's very important. You know, we all, I understand, you all have your districts, you all have things that you want to see. But at this point, you know, the next step is for us to meet administration and to look to see, how do we proceed? What do we do? What do we not do? And we're looking at that every day. But so far, I think it has paid off. It definitely has paid off. Any questions that I can answer for you? I will tell you this, in case you do not know, we have lost some businesses, okay, through this. We lost, and I don't think, oh, I did put it on here. I didn't think I did. I did put it on there, okay? Of course, Jimmy John's, as you all probably know, Jersey Mike's is opening tomorrow. And that's, it's kind of going to kind of take the place of Jimmy John's, same location. The shoe department that I have on here, is my understanding is being backfilled already. So Logan's is a very, very popular site. I think that there's a lot of interest in that property. So hopefully, we'll see some, something in that building, you know, before too long. But these businesses that we have lost so far, this is about a fourth, these businesses impacted our general account by about $400,000 a year. That's how much we took in from these businesses. That's sales tax, occupational liquor, if they had liquor, your business license and so forth. So it is very important that we try to backfill, and I know Lisa Osburn is, you know, works on that daily. But it is important that we try to backfield as many of these businesses as quickly as possible. And there again, I think that there possibly will be some more that we will see, you know, that we will lose. Any question?
Lisa, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to give more or less an opinion, all right? And so I apologize in advance for the spot that may put you in.
I asked her not to preach, so I hope it's not a question where she will have to preach.
No, it is not. So we obviously are petitioning for our share of CARES Act money and stimulus money that's out there. And, you know, again, we've been using this term a lot, but it is a competitive scenario where it's part of the reason why you're entering data into that portal to help make the case for what we, to what we deserve in terms of the city of Gadsden. Just again, and I want to be careful how I say this, because I don't want to put you or anybody else in a bad position, but, you know, to normalize, well, to realistically assess what we anticipate receiving, how much in the form of relief do you think that will allow us to realize as a city with our budgets? I mean, I, you know, again, competitive scenario, you know, there's a limited pot of money out there. Every city in the state, every city in the country, to be quite honest, is competing for those monies. But realistically, what do you anticipate?
I'm going to be careful, I'm going to be careful what I say, and I will ask Frankie to probably to help here, but the money is very restricted in the fact that it has to be COVID-19-related expenses. So it cannot be for budgeted expenses, and it cannot be for revenue shortfalls or losses, which are the two very things that we are all experiencing as municipal governments. So for our relief on our general account, you're really not going to be able to see any, because it can apply for these conditions. But it's still a good thing, because there are ways, and I think, that we can apply and use the funding. And hopefully, we will get our share. I think, do we, Frankie, do I give amounts? Do we? Yeah, go ahead.
2.2. Can you say it up there so people can hear, please?
Well, I can say it.
Because we can't hear you.
He's talking about the different grants that we have already gotten.
Right.
We have a HUD grant that you're all aware of. Uh, we have a HUD grant that you're all aware of, six hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. We have a transportation grant that we're still in the process of working on. That's about a little over two million dollars. Um, we have a police department grant, um, that was, um, for overtime and, um, supplies. EMA, of course, has, uh, ways through grant, EMA state grant funds of getting reimbursements. And we've already made a reimbursement, uh, through that grant. We've made two reimbursements already through the police department grant. The fire department has applied for a grant that is for supplies. The problem with all of those grants is excellent. You know, the amount of money that we have received, and there again, we should be very thankful. Problem is there again, it all has to be COVID-nineteen-related expenses.
Well, and you said it, you said it earlier, Lisa, new money to some degree, but new expenses.
Yes.
And that's, and that's the, that's part of the point I wanted to drive. Because I've heard it said that, you know, oh, we, we shouldn't be, you know, speaking to the losses because those are going to get offset by this windfall that we're about to receive, and that is not true.
That's not true at all.
That's people who don't understand the mechanics that are saying that.
No, it very clearly states that it cannot be used for revenue shortfalls. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Wait, so, uh, quick question, are you, are you referring to the CDBG funds or the coronavirus relief funds?
Actually, all of those funds have to be COVID-related nineteen expenses. They cannot be used for budgeted items or revenue shortfalls.
Okay.
Including the money, including the money coming from the state.
I default to you on that. I've just read it a different way.
Any other questions? If not?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
Just had a question on, uh, so, understand how the money coming in from these grants and things, uh, the CARES Act has to be COVID-related.
Yes, sir.
Assuming we have really stringent tracking, uh, going on to track each department's expenses, so we can, like on a daily basis, weekly basis, we can kind of cut and see what's, what's going to qualify?
We are. Um, all of those grants are reimbursable grants. So you have to, of course, expend the money before, you know, you can do the draw. Um, the first reimbursement that we did through the EMA grant, state grant, um, we, um, it was for all departments. Um, Deborah did an excellent job. We sent out things to the departments. They had to fill them out theirself, turn in all, it could be personnel, um, you know, overtime, equipment. It, it allowed you to, uh, get a rate for equipment use that you could apply for. Um, mileage, like, um, I'm going to use Nick because he's sitting behind me. Uh, but Nick had went out and had looked for supplies, uh, different sources, different places. He could claim that mileage. Um, you know, the, and so documentation, whether it be any of the grants that we're talking about, documentation is the key. You have to have good documentation. You have to, in that case, you have to log your miles, you know, you have to. And EMA keeps a login sheet, um, of all of this stuff. So our first, um, grant, the, the first one that we did last week to the state was, I think, eighty-seven thousand dollars, if I remember correctly, in expenses that we had had from March, mid-March to the end of April, citywide, for COVID-nineteen-related expenses. So, um, you know, so yes, documentation is very important, and we are tracking those every day. We have set up with our HUD grant, uh, with the police department grant, we'll do the same with transportation grant. All of the grants we have so far, we have set up designated accounts just for those grants so that we can code the expenditures there. That way that we have a hundred percent proof of tracking. Um, and it's, it makes it easier on us, it makes it easier on the departments. And so we, uh, I, I think we're doing a good job with them, and we're going to try to spend every penny of that money because it's a hundred percent money. You know, it's just we've got to come up with ways, um, you know, whether it be equipment cost, you know, for future, um, not just PPE stuff, but, you know, fire, the, the equipment the fire department needs, equipment that EMA needs, possibly the hospital system. So we're trying to look at a number of unique ways, uh, to come up with, you know, with funding that qualifies. Um, and we're just now in the application process for the state. So I think it's due by June something, fifteenth, fifteenth.
I just remember Chief Carroll had comments about, uh, like a process when you go into a house, uh, it's about a two and a half hour after it's over processed. Before the COVID virus, it may have been a thirty-minute process. So I'm curious if the hours that the employees have to spend to do those kind of cleanings and things can be aggressively used in the, in a reimbursement.
I don't think so because they're all work hours, and those are budgeted work hours.
That's a good, because it's increased hours, it seems like that. I know y'all are on top of it. Thank you for.
We are, we're trying our best.
Appreciate it.
Lisa, something else to commend you on is that we know from an auditing perspective, there'll be a reckoning at some point. Uh, so this documentation is very helpful as it relates to that. So you don't, you don't get to just start receiving it and spending it willy-nilly.
That's why we always have had clean audits. We're really good on our documentation.
And, uh, and again, I don't, I, I'm glad you brought up the, uh, the LEAGUE's portal. Uh, there's a reason why Sue and Snowden's leading that project, um, and you spoke to it earlier. Um, you know, Tuscaloosa's losses are meaningful. Um, you know, not that everybody else's are not, uh, but, uh, their, 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 their losses are meaningful. So, um, you know, they volunteered to take the lead on that project because it's obviously important to them, but what they're doing helps the rest of us as well.
Yes, it does. Okay, thank you very much.
Lisa, can I ask you one more question?
Yes, sir.
Um, one of the allowable, uh, reimbursable expenditures is for grants to local small businesses who may have been forced to shut down. And I know that this reimbursable portion is good through December the thirty-first. Is there any way we could look at possibly setting up a program for local small businesses? Some sort of a grant program?
I haven't seen anything on that.
Okay, I can forward it to you. It's in the Treasury's guidelines right here for the program. It says, quote, "Expenditures related to the, to the provision of grants to small businesses to reimburse the cost of business interruption caused by required closures." And it, and the COVID Relief Fund allows for municipalities to be reimbursed for any monies they may have paid to small businesses through a grant program that they may set up. And that's through December thirty-first, if I understand correctly, claims through December thirty-first. So if possible, I'd love it if we could look at that. I think it'd be good for.
I know that that's not involved in any of our grants that we have at this point, you know, so.
I'll, I'll send you the, the form I'm looking at. Thank you.
Ms. Ross? I was going to ask Ms. Ross, so when is, um, another good time that it won't rush you, that you can give us another financial report so we can, uh, schedule you? How often do you, is it quarterly or?
No, ma'am, this is once a month.
This is once a month.
We do financials, and, and I was very proud, I was proud of my staff. I said, we worked very hard yesterday because we have never closed the month on the first day of the month. But we did yesterday. We were here early, we worked long, and I worked at home last night to get this to you today, but I was determined to get something to you because I know everybody wants to know. Uh, but we do this, we, we close out the, the month and get the financials done, so once a month.
So maybe the second week in August, you could do a report, that, that'd be, that will be past the first of the month.
Yes, ma'am, or I can do one in July.
Okay, I meant July, I'm sorry. I'm trying to rush, I'm trying to rush COVID on out of here. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
I have a request if possible. Uh, could we get Lisa, uh, Osborne?
You're late.
Okay, I'm just, give me.
I was just wanting to thank the mayor's office for allowing us to, uh, get different departments to come and make a report. And, uh, I believe on next meeting date, we'll have the airport. And, uh, I believe I've asked for Ms. Lisa Ross, Osborne to come also. And so just, just to give us an update of what's going on in the city. At this time, we have, uh, uh, announcements, comments by the ma, mayor. Would you start, please? Could you have any?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, in spite of all the, uh, COVID stuff, we're living in a twilight zone, but our finances are still in really good shape, so everybody's know that. Another thing we get asked a lot about is, there's nothing going on. If you listen to our engineer's time, uh, he named several projects that's all in the works. And that takes, it takes a while. You can't start a project and finish it the next week, especially big projects. So, uh, you know, just be patient, but we are working in spite of all the circumstances. Uh, also, uh, when, uh, Goodyear was about to close in oh-six, uh, we started trying to come up with some other, uh, jobs. And now we have the auto suppliers, Honda, Mercedes suppliers, and several out, you know, close to the airport. And, uh, they're beginning to ramp up, and, uh, they'll start hiring pretty soon when they get going. So if you will, if you want a job, you can get a good-paying job out there and good benefits. You just have to show up and work every day. That's the main problem. They can't get enough workers, and we got the work, and we got the jobs. Uh, also, uh, let me make sure I got so many notes here. As soon as it about opening up, I know people will comment, when we're going to open up the rest of the stuff? We're, we're looking at it sort of day by day, depending on our money, and we'll gradually do that, and we'll try to get things open as soon as we can, but we've got to make sure of what we're doing before we open something up.
Okay. Councilman Worthy?
Yes, Madam President, I just want to make an announcement that, um, this Thursday, starting around ten o'clock, get there about nine at Shiloh, we'll start handing out the, uh, produce boxes again. I think it'll be five hundred boxes. And as soon as the truck get there and we offload the truck, because it's a line there already, so we start. So we, we try to set ten, but they're going to start earlier, so please get there. And this may be the last week that we hand out masks because we're running out of masks. Uh, EMA has been getting us the masks, so they're having a hard time getting masks. So, uh, we'll give out much as we can in the hand sanitizer. Uh, and also, like I was saying earlier, uh, Gadsden Empowerment Initiative, uh, the nonprofit group that we started before I ran for office, we received a grant to, uh, help house the, uh, recovering COVID-nineteen patients. And, uh, I won't know the exact amount until we get the contract and I sign it, so that should be the next couple of days. So that way, in of these hotels, I hear that, uh, is allowing the people that's tested positive and recovering, we could, uh, help pay the, uh, hotel bill. So, uh, and then on the, I want to, um, tell Ms. Stephanie, thank you for organizing the protest march on Sunday night. It was very peaceful. I was there. I marched. I had my mask on, and I was in the back. Uh, marched from, uh, the county to the city, uh, in protest of what happened to Mr. George Floyd in Minnesota. Uh, it's, it's just, we have to do better. As officers, and me being a former police officer, retired police officer, we're professionals. And when we come in contact with, uh, individuals, when we get calls, we're, we're meeting them on their worst day. They having a problem, and we're meeting them on their worst day. So we have to be more professional than normal then. I've been spat on, I've been kicked, I've been, you know, hit and all that, and I wouldn't treat a dog like that. And those officers stood on, on, that officer stood on his neck with his knee for almost nine minutes. And the other three officers that was there stood by and watched. And that's a shame. This is twenty-twenty, and this shouldn't be happening in the United States of America. And it is sad. It's just a sad day, and the only way this is going to stop is the good officers is going to have to stop it. And I'm encouraged, I'm optimistic because, uh, I seen a video of a protest, and they, and they had a, a young man on the ground, and one officer was cuffing him, and another officer put his knee on his neck, and that officer took his hand and removed that other officer's knee. That's all that had to happen there. If they, if they wouldn't have been cowards and removed his knee, we wouldn't be going through what we're going through in the United States of America. And I do not condone violence in any way. I do not condone, uh, rioting and eluding, but you have a right to peaceful protest. That's in the Constitution, the First Amendment. So we have to do better. Thank you.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes, Ms. Ross, uh, I've heard for years and years and years, see, a guest needs to do away with their occupational tax. Everybody keeps telling me, we need to do away with the occupational tax. But as sitting here today, listening to you speak about how much occupational tax we take in and our, uh, city budget to pay employees is seventy or seventy-one percent, would it be fair to say that we take that two percent occupational tax to pay the employees that we have? If we didn't have that occupational tax, two percent, we could never pay the employees, could we? But that was, we usually mostly that to pay them the salaries, which is what you. Yeah, so there's no way in the world people says we can do away with that, we could ever do away with that, what it brings into the city. Uh, I just want to say, just keep your thoughts and prayers for the, everybody up here, pray for the whole city, and just let the good Lord, he knows what's going on, he'll take care of us.
Councilman Wilson?
Um, I, since the occupational tax got brought up, I'll give my two cents on that. I tell people all the time that I know that the occupational tax looks bad on paper. The optics of it are terrible. People will talk about how it's not legal and, and anymore for new cities to pass it. But here's the bottom line. If you don't pay an occupational tax, we could pass an ordinance today that said, no more occupational tax. And then we'd turn around and have to raise your property taxes, your ad valorem taxes. All those other taxes would go up. Every municipality, it is so unfair for you to look at one tax that a city levies and use that as justification for an entire city. I'm telling you, I've done my research on this, and I encourage every single one of y'all to do the same in every city where there's not an occupational tax. I was looking at one city yesterday, and I won't name it, but it's a comparable city to Gadsden. In the city of Gadsden, if you buy a new car, you pay three point two-five percent tax on it when you go to register the tag. In this particular city, it was eight percent. Uh, in the city of Gadsden, now again, keep in mind that the city of Gadsden doesn't even collect all of the property taxes levied against your property in this county. But the county average property tax in Adewal County is point four-three percent. In the city that we were using as comparison, it's one point four-five percent. Literally, you pay three times as much property taxes in these cities. So the bottom line is, when you look at the city of Gadsden's taxes on their community, on their citizens, relative to the total taxes applied by any other city in Alabama, we are at or below almost every single one of those cities. We have relatively very low taxes in this city. And for those that are wondering, I saw a comment about why we don't have an aqua, aquatic park playground here. My initial response is, we got a giant one. It's called the Coussa River. But, you know, the reason we don't have that is, you know, is because you, you would have to pay a tax to, to facilitate those programs. This city is not against the people wanting to have fun things to do. Now, should the city be paying for every one of those things? I don't necessarily think so, but even if you do think they should, be prepared to pay more in taxes. You know, the, the city of Piedmont was used as an example of what, the water park there. Well, you got to pay seven dollars every time you walk in that water park, or you can pay a hundred dollars for a one-year pass. Plus, you're going to pay a higher tax rate on your water, your sewer, your garbage than you do here in Gadsden. So I just ask y'all to please keep that in mind. I know it's a time where everybody's frustrated, but my only words of encouragement to the mayor's office and to Lisa and everybody else who's working on this is some of the greatest advancements in the history of our country have happened in times of crisis. And we have an opportunity to make this city better, more efficient, more, uh, you know, uh, of a, of a, have better ability to serve our citizens as we come out of this. And I know that everybody right now is dealing with the emergency triage effect of how do we survive this? But I hope that we all continue to look at opportunities to push forward and to grow and, and add services to this community as a result of this. So thank you, everybody, for all your hard work.
Councilman Reed?
Yeah, I, I tell you what, Lisa.
Yeah, I tell you what, Lisa, that's a good report. It's like getting kicked in the head and being glad, cause you may feel good at the end. So it came out real well and I appreciate, you know, I appreciate you anyway. I do wanna thank the board direct, why is it the board direct? The board, Deacons Board at Bellevue Baptist Church, they came through and now that's a shelter for us on the mountain. Here the four of us had to drive off the mountain down to Dwight Park during a bad, bad storm. So kudos to them and we appreciate them for doing that.
Councilman Back?
Yes, Madam President. I'm hooked up here with my mask and my glasses. Lisa, thank you for all your work and putting that report together. You know, we have to have that, we have to know where we are. Hopefully the public will understand and will respond appropriately to the situation where we are. Nobody asked for this. Again, unprecedented times, over and over and over again. I agree with Councilman Worthy's comments a hundred percent. This has got to stop. And it starts with each one of us. I make a lot of comments on social media. My prayer is for God to change our hearts. I think we've reached a point where this is a heart issue. You can't be a good person and see something like that and it not bother you. So if it doesn't bother you, then I'm telling you that you have a heart problem that probably only the Lord can solve. So I'm encouraging everybody to pray for all of our hearts. I mean, I'm praying for my heart. I want my heart to be better. So I think we have to have a constant prayer and I think that'll, that'll change things. Speaking of prayer, First Baptist Church, Gadsden continues to have our food pantry giveaway tomorrow at two o'clock, no, excuse me, yeah, tomorrow, Wednesday at two o'clock, we will have food and dinner on Fifth Street. It's at the corner of Fifth and Walnut. We had a good report from David Hooks this morning. You know, there's a lot of comments on social media about Gadsden's not doing anything. We've talked about it this morning just a little bit. There's been a concerted effort for a long time that goes on. You just can't talk about it. It has to be kept under wraps. There's a lot of non-disclosure agreements that the city signs, the mayor signs, and David Hooks signs that prohibits them from speaking of any projects. It gives the public appearance that nothing's going on, but there's a lot going on. And very proud of what that, not only what David and his team is doing, but the board. There's a really strong board at the IDA that has worked really long and hard. I'm one of these, I think our future is very bright. You know, we're at the beginning of rebranding and remaking Gadsden and Etowah County. I think our best days are in front of us. I don't for one minute think that this is not gonna turn out to be good. It's not much fun right now, but that's just the hand that we're dealt and responsible mature adults understand that. We handle it with study, with measured comments and with measured responses and we move forward. And I think that's what our team is doing. Two percent occupational tax, you know, Jason, Councilman Wilson summed it up very well. Just do some study, you know, and comparisons and just look around. It also comes down to what my daddy used to tell me, it's wants versus needs. You know, I want a brand new car, do I need a brand new car? You know, I want a real big house on the river, do I need a real big house on the river? And on and on. So you have to balance your wants and your needs. I saw the comment about the aquatic center. I think it'd be great to have one of those. Do we need one of those? Well, some people would say, yes, we do. A lot would say, no, we don't need an aquatic center. So you can't please everybody. It's always, it's just gonna be a balancing act, but it goes back to the wants versus the needs. Right now in the city of Gadsden, what we need to do is what our administration's doing and that's having measured, calculated responses to an unprecedented time in history. And I'm talking about all of history. And that's what we need to do. Talk of those kind of things, I think, aren't necessarily bad, it just needs to be put to the side just for a little while so we can get through this. And to make sure that we know what we're doing, we don't wanna spend money that we don't have. And we have to be careful and we have to be responsible in what we do, even more so now than ever because of where we find ourselves. So thank you for those that are making those decisions and those are hard decisions. And this council, I think, will have future hard decisions as this budget, the new budget unfolds and we have to really look at it. So everybody, keep us in your prayers as we do that. Thank you.
Councilman Will?
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I think over the years, I think you've heard me speak to a theme that I'm a huge proponent of and that's civil discourse. And to a large degree, that's what you've heard today. We don't agree on everything, but we've had some good sound discussion about a number of things. And I agree with Councilman Back. You know, Councilman Wilson summed it up quite nicely, using data to speak to why we're, you know, why we have bought into some of the financial models that we do. It's because they're proven and they work. And so again, things aren't perfect for us. We've heard the report. There's a lot of negativity in those numbers, but boy, it could be much worse. If we didn't have, if we didn't have money in our coffers for rainy days, it would be much worse right now. So I wanna thank Lisa for very even-handed, very, very clear report. I think she took the time and the opportunity to boil some of that very complicated technicals, financial stuff down to the average, everyday individual. And that's important because that's why we hear some of these ridiculous comments, it's because people just don't understand. And you know, you have to take some of those complicated things and boil them down so that they do understand and can process it. And so I appreciate that. And that whole aquatic center, you know, thing, you know, I think people forget, we took the opportunity several years ago to actually grant a purchase option to a private party for that very purpose. We just basically said, here, you got the first option to purchase this land if you wanna develop it. And so they walked away with that. That's money in the bank. If you know anything about financing and how all that works, that's money in the bank. So they walk away with that purchase option. I forget what their property, you know, appraised is for, but they walk away from it, walk away with it. And again, this is not anything negative about that individual, but nothing ever evolved. And a lot of that had to do with the inability to raise money. And so that's where you are. You don't want elected officials, you know, look at the city of Prattville. You know, you don't want elected officials taking your tax dollars and putting them into private ventures. Because it's not a matter of if, it's when they flip upside down, there goes your money. There goes your money. So please, you know, be careful what you ask for. Because we could wake up one day and you could have put elected officials in office, guys who've never signed in front of a check on anything, and they're making decisions based on emotion and all of a sudden, our tax dollars are at risk. I live here too. Whether I choose to serve as an elected official or not, I simply want sound financial decisions made, not emotional ones. I want sound financial decisions made. So again, thanks to Lisa for her report. Thank you Heath. Thanks to every department head that gave a report this morning and I think you guys do a great job of keeping us abreast. I don't think it's necessary for us to talk about all of the particulars. You know, I have offline discussions about in particular things in my district because there's seven others of us up here. And so I try, you know, I'm not always good at it, but I try not to bog this meeting down, talking about things just specific to my district. I reserve that for one-on-one conversations with these guys offline. And so, you know, I can't tell any other council member how to manage that. But again, you know, as Councilwoman Tolls mentioned, as President Tolls mentioned, you know, she's trying to balance and budget the timing of this meeting, get us in here and get us out. And so this is a great opportunity for us to take a lot of those discussions offline. The last thing I'm gonna say, as it relates to the George Floyd, very unfortunate event, is I likewise, I think Councilman Worthy said it well, you know, those young people responded. You know, Dr. King cited rioting and protest as kind of being the voice of the unheard. I don't condone rioting at all and I think it's ridiculous. I've seen some disgusting images of people that have been rioting and then we've got a commander in chief who is inciting it. You know, these are just bad times in that space. But those young people Sunday, I'm proud of them because they exercised their First Amendment right and these are very critical times. Here I sit as an elected official, but in two thousand nine, I stood right over there in front of the Civil Service Board because I was pulled over by a knuckle-headed cop who, thank goodness that this, that this police department got rid of. But I stood over there and I had to file a civil service complaint because he was a jackass. He was a knucklehead. And he mishandled me that day, not because I was breaking any laws or doing anything wrong, just because I was black. And it hasn't made me bitter because two of my best friends in the world are police officers. And they're just as disgusted about what happened in Minnesota as anybody else. So don't buy into this notion that all police officers need to be demonized. And let's not give the floor to people who have ill intentions, people who don't wanna obey structure and the rule of law. See, if we're not careful, those are the folks that are gonna take over in this season. We have to be careful about that as well. But that was a horrible incident. Thank God it was captured on video and thank God the vast majority of the people in this great nation, white or black, are disgusted by that. And let's drive change. We're a, you know, I had a young person who was at that march who asked me, Councilman Williams, what next? And the thing that I told her is that what's next is that we're a nation of laws and we should let the rule of law continue to take care of these kinds of issues. And we've gotta put people in office who understand that and who will make sure that when these bad things happen, that those people are brought to justice. And so that's the next step. And the way that we as individuals do that is we go out and vote and put the kind of like-minded people in office who will bring these awful people to justice. So thanks to each and every one of you for what you've said today. This is probably one of the best meetings that we've had, in my opinion, in a long time and I appreciate each other. Thank you.
Did you want to make an announcement?
I just, I forgot to say thank you to Lisa and I want to say thank you. You know, I know you have a hard job and we don't always see eye to eye, but I like you more now than I did when I was a police officer, sitting on the other side negotiating with you and some other ones when I was the union president. But I understand, I'll put it to you this way, I understand now, cause I'm sitting on this side of it. So. I told you you would. Yeah, well, some of it I don't understand, but I'm just, you know, and I say, I wanna tell you, I appreciate you too. I really do. And that's it. I forgot to say that.
And Ms. Ross knows that in continuation of that, there are businesses out there that still owe us money and haven't paid their taxes, sales taxes, and some of them don't even intend to pay their sales taxes. But I would just like to end that everybody has alluded to this and we are going through difficult times, but I'm gonna say this every council meeting. V O T E, vote. That's the only way you're gonna be able to change anything. That's the only way you're gonna be able to change the people that are in office. Since we aren't able to physically go to church, I'm gonna help you go to church today. Read Romans the thirteenth chapter and it starts off with saying that all offices of the government are ordained by God and we're supposed to support them, but it didn't say to destroy them. And the other thing that I'm going to say is, if you haven't and you may not like Dr. Martin Luther King, but you need to read the whole letter that he wrote from a Birmingham jail that will give you a lot of insight. I believe that there's a primary that's coming up here and I'm not sure, Ms. Nelson, do we all vote in this election that's coming up here? What is it, the runoff?
It's the runoff election for.
That's what you need to do. Half of Gadsden, thirty-six thousand people in Gadsden and about two or three go out and vote. We had a school board election, about two or three came out and vote then. So the only way you're gonna change things, the only way you're gonna change people is to go out and vote. If you don't vote, then you don't have a voice. Yes, your vote do count. Vote locally, vote statewide and vote nationally. The other thing I wanna say is check the people record. Don't go by what you see me doing out there, carrying boxes, buying lunches. Check out how I vote up here as it pertain to your interests. And I say that because, check out all those, check out Jeff Sessions' record, check out Tommy Tuberville's record, check out Becky Norton's record, check out, oh, is it Overtree that's running? Check out all these people record and see how they voted for your interest. Don't just vote them cause they look good or you like them, but see what they've done. And then you go and, cause everybody can dress up, you know, I can, I can put a hat on and stand up and speak and look good and hey, I'm gonna vote for her. Vote for what I've done for you and your interests. I appreciate it. We did have a, we did have a good meeting today as far as our reports are concerned. I appreciate it. Appreciate what the IDA is doing for us and we need to continue to have good meetings and to stand up for our city. If nothing else, I ask for. We have a commissioner, we very glad that you came.
I just wanna encourage.